And I'll call this meeting to order. I call on the folks for being here and appreciate you very much. First, I'll call and make some loud milk to have our indication.
Hey, Greg. My heavenly Father, as we meet here this evening, I just pray for your wisdom for this board as we make decisions concerning citizens of our county. Oh, we thank you for the privilege of calling Harris County Home. Pray, Lord, that you would continue to watch over our citizens here. We thank you, Lord, for our law enforcement personnel, our military personnel, those in public safety personnel to keep us safe and protect our freedoms and follow our best beliefs and praise.
Today, I had the privilege of attending the viewing of American Sniper. Very powerful movie, but it made me reflect even more so on the debt that we owe to our veterans and to those who gave the ultimate sacrifice. I would like to institute where possible a process where we call on a veteran to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Tonight, I would like to have Bobby Harrison, Army Corps of Engineers in the Korean War, lead us in the pledge of allegiance if you'd all be staying.
The question, Eric. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bobby. First item on the agenda is the minutes of the regular session for January the 6th. You have a motion. Who approves?
Second.
You have a motion from the second. The discussion or corrections on the favor, signify raising your hand. Who carries? Next is the appearance of citizens. Scott Moore. Scott.
Scott Moore, 1-4-1-3-6, probably 116, by Mountain Bluff. Any thought?
Don't have any. I don't have anything to report of it. I do have an appointment next week with the manager of Tyson Plant and University. And I will be meeting with him. I have talked to Sam Wellburn and will be meeting with him, Department of Transportation, sometime within the next week, 10 days.
And that's appearing to Hamilton.
Not Hamilton and about the trains on the road in front of the chicken. That's all I have to report. Greg, do you have any?
Mr. Chairman.
Mark.
No, I've had some discussions with Steve Morgan with County Extension Agency about some water testing through the University of Georgia to at least, you know, see what's there. Of course, the standards are set by EPD, so all they do is report. They said that there's a battery of tests that are, we talked to one of the scientists up there, that they would recommend for each location, so it would be a matter again of getting the permission to do the same thing and do that. Of course, he, this would just be for informational, educational purposes, not anything for legal, but just to give us an idea of where we go forward. So if we do that, and there may not be any cost to us, he has a budget that would allow, you know, may capture most of all of the costs. I don't, we haven't discussed specifically yet, but...
But that, now that'll be tested for more than one thing?
Yes, yes, that, this would be, there would be several things, six or seven items, as I understand, the nitrates and nitrites and phosphorus and some other.
Now, that's reason, I'm glad you brought that up, because I've been thinking about that last test we did. I don't know if I know of one, but I was under impression they were going to test for more stuff when they tested in the creek.
Yeah, well, unfortunately, that was the limit of their capabilities, so I think, still hope they can test for benzene, which is something I'd really like to...
But I mean, I thought that's what the 350 was, y'all approved, was for more testing, a number of things, not just the one thing. That's the way I, we understood it. I just wanted to clarify what happened.
If anyone knows what, you know, substances we should specifically test for, you have to ask. They don't ask to do everything, so...
Right. I know, there's a list, like I said, we can, I think we'll get pretty close on that list, come down to that.
Well, what, you know, they can just recommend some, but they don't really know all the circumstances and, you know, but so like with the benzene, we can add, be sure that's added to the list. Imagine if we test for that. Anybody knows?
The benzene would be parking lot specific.
Okay, thank you.
Because that's the byproducts we gather.
Did, by my mind, did you say you talked to EPD or you?
I have not talked to EPD.
At our last meeting, you said you was going to try to call somebody.
Yeah, and I have not.
You have not.
May I move forward?
Yes.
With that?
Yes, please do.
Thank you.
All right. Okay.
As long as we're trying, that's my... Is this, is this because we have Mike Jolly on the, directly behind you, is that...
Mike who? Call that guy rather. No, but, you know, no sense beating a dead horse, is what I'm getting at. We all know the problems, so, you know, tell me what I need to know tonight.
All right, Bobby Harrison. Will you sign up to speak, Bobby?
Bobby Harrison, 159, H-11, I'm about it. I too had, my wife and I had the pleasure of watching the movie American Sniper. I ran my hair on the way out. It was great. Everybody should see it. That last meeting, you mentioned something about, I remember Sam Wellburn being around with the problem in Manchester. Can you elaborate on doing that?
Bobby, maybe he didn't hear me. I have not met with Sam. I've talked with him, and sometime within the next week or so, he is going to come out here and we're going to look at, number one, the intersection right here, 116 and 27. We're also going to look at the drains out in front of the chicken.
The sign on the mountain, you know, that's a star, Martha, got this thing going. That, you know, I'm in today, that don't tell me a lot.
Actually, a citizen...
If you look at the sign, it shows a road that, some way up there in front of you is going to be a, try to local or trailer crossing in front of it, it may give some luck. That's not the situation we have. The local has made the whole heavy equipment, made real low to the ground so the center of gravity be lower. I feel like the bad idea is let the state take the power of 354 off the system. I don't think maintenance would be that great. The road's in good shape. The cracks have been sealed this year. That's something we don't do on the county roads. We should be doing it. Water goes in, goes through the base, it elevates it to the ready plate. You're going to have a base, a subgrade lane. This is 10 down the pole. We built Manchester Expressway. The state took the old State Route 85 off the system, came, old, came back being old, one strange road, we maintained it. Same thing happened in Westport, the old Westport Road. We built three, 103, we went straight north into 18, instead of taking the old road into the southern part of the city of Westport. County been maintaining that, but that was since 1958. Something else I thought of, I think we could work on, try to get them, state to take over and sign a number to blow Blue Springs over. Once that was a state route, you could start lobbying states, not their representatives, try to get a high density change. Off route coming north, on route coming south. That would relieve a lot of traffic by the end of Harris County. People in Hamilton trying to go to Columbus. If they do build a road, it's bad now with so many turns you have to make to go that route, but it's a good route. When they build a road, it's going to be that much more congested. The first step would be getting it on the state system. You'd be swapping three miles for 10. We'd be getting three the main thing and giving them 10. You got some win-win value there.
Thank you, Bobby.
I'd like to ask Mike, when these trucks get hung up?
I got called on today by one of the commissioners, and I only know of two. Not saying that some may have not gotten hung up and they've gotten off without calling deputies out there. What you have to remember, if the state lets, if we take it back to the state, then they're not going to patrol it with the troopers as much, but if they take over Little Blue, that'd be a good one.
Totally don't ever get to the point where we sanction that safely for a few dollars.
Bobby, I'm...
I don't want to put no dollar amount on somebody's life, but I'll go pay the other piece of truck in that, I'm having a lot of bridge. I'm not going to get to you.
I'm glad you mentioned that. While I got Sam, I'll get him out there and we'll look at that too, and I'll ask him about these other things.
Okay.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Bobby.
Appreciate it.
All right, any other old business? All right, moving to new business. I'd like to ask Don Bowling to come forward, please, and his wife. I see a number of folks in the audience tonight. Some of you are regulars and are here all the time. Some of you are here just occasionally, but I'm sure that the reason some of you are here tonight is because of this gentleman standing in front of us. Mr. Don Bowling. Don, we want to thank you for the service you rendered to this county. We have prepared a resolution, which we will sign tonight and present to you, and I would like to read that resolution. Whereas, Don Luanne Bowling, better known as Don, was employed by Harris County from April 16th, 2001, to December 31st, 2014, as shop foreman of the vehicle maintenance shop. And whereas Don was responsible for the day-to-day maintenance of all county vehicles, to include repairs and servicing, and in some cases, the painting of certain vehicles. And whereas as shop foreman, Don worked effectively with the prison warden to utilize prison inmates having the necessary skills and abilities to perform work related to vehicle maintenance and upkeep, thus saving the county money by using prison labor. And whereas Don worked with county officials, coworkers, and the volunteer fire departments to accomplish the day-to-day maintenance needs of county vehicles. And whereas, under Don's direction, the vehicle maintenance shop was able to maintain the ever-increasing number of county vehicles with a workforce of four until 2013, when another lead mechanic of its vehicle fleet was added. Whereas, through his commitment to maintaining county vehicles to the best of his department's ability, Don served the county and its citizens by giving of his time and expertise, thereby contributing many hours toward the betterment of the county through the maintenance of his vehicle fleet. And whereas, Don Bowling is shop foreman, weathered the sometimes stormy waters of passage. Now therefore, being resolved, in honor of Don Bowling for his service and commitment to the county, that this resolution be presented to this dedicated and faithful servant of the citizens of Harris County, and that a copy be spread upon the minutes of the Board of Commissioners of Harris County, so resolved this 20th day of January, 2015. I would like to add, just as an extra comment, the vehicle maintenance repair shop is much better for Don's service and has made tremendous strides, and we stand in good stead moving forward. And I thank you, Don, and I would present this and make the motion that we approve this resolution. Do I have a second? We have a second? Any discussion or comments? All in favor, please signify raising your hand. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bowling. And thank you, Ms. Bowling, for letting us have your husband.
Would you like him back?
He's only been off three weeks, and you already got free.
We did check into Mr. Chairman, and he can come back on a part-time status.
Ah, okay. All right. Thanks again, Don. Okay, the next item is calling Mike Jolly, our sheriff. He's requested that the county adopt legislation to authorize the magistrate court, probate court, and superior court to charge and collect the technology fee for each civil case filed and criminal fine paid with a fee not exceeding $10 to be used for technological needs of the public safety in the courts. The funds should be collected by the courts, maintained by the county in a segregated fund, and used for authorized purposes. To implement this legislation, Board of Commissioners has to adopt a resolution to request local legislation, and it has to be advertised. The resolution we have with us, and the, I have that, but first I will, rather than read this thing, I will let Mike explain to us what he wants to do.
Well, first, let me say that I have to what y'all said about Don. He, I have, as y'all know, 40-plus vehicles in the fleet, and he kept them running, kept them up in spite of the bad usage of some of my deputy's foot and crew. And I thank you very much. You did that, thank you. I really appreciate it very much. And I saw the movie. Awesome. Awesome. You go see that movie, and don't shed a tear. You must be alcatraz. That's a good movie. The reason that I asked for the local funding legislation bill for technology is because of, besides the fact that throughout the state, many other counties have implemented one like this, is that we've embarked into things over at the jail and within the courthouse here that I don't believe that just taxpayers can keep up with some of the cost of it. One thing that I've done, that y'all know, we've got a new jail system, and as part of that jail system, I've now discovered that the computers that we have in our vehicles that the deputies use to do their reports, that transport or go over into our jail system, have to go over by Wi-Fi. And of course, y'all not, y'all not paying for that Wi-Fi. I'm doing that through my drug money, but the computers we have, we signed for from Columbus Police Department. They let us have from their old computers. We didn't have to buy those, because the system upgrade that we have, that's very difficult. In fact, the computers that we have, 11 of them can't be used because I'm not a computer person, but the Windows in it can't be upgraded by the computers we have. To make a long story short, we're going to have to get into the computers now and take another. I have it in our drug fund where I can buy the computers. I'm going to ask the taxpayers to do that, and as y'all know, when you start using Wi-Fi, that's a monthly expense. It's not in the budget, the monthly expenses. Between now and June, I'm paying for that out of my drug money. And we have 10 Wi-fis that we're using for 27 vehicles, and we're switching off. When the vehicles come in tonight, we switch off at 6:00. We took those out of the ones that were used during the day, and they took them off, put them in at night, and so we're hotlining, if you call it, the Wi-fis. And that's costing somebody, meaning the drug money, about $4 a month. And come June, July, when we do the re-budget, I will ask y'all to pick that up. Hopefully, through this technology fee, that can help offset that. Because that's an expense that's going to be bigger. So anyway, that's kind of what it is. If you look at the number of tickets that we wrote last year, and I sent all y'all the 2015 stuff, if you look at our tickets that we wrote, and if you look at the number of tickets the state patrol wrote, we'll bring in roughly about $30,000 a year if we do $10. Some counties do five, some do 15. I just run for 10. If you look at the civil actions on what we do, sheriff's offices, about 10,000, so that's 40,000. I don't know how many the clerks do, and how many all the others do. I had to research their files, but that's about $40,000. My, my usage of that money that we bring in would be probably about 24 at $32 and something apiece, or 27, and we'd be close to about $16,000. That would be around that 40. You have magistrate, probate, clerk's office that would use some of it. You have an I-1, it might lead some of it. You got PNS that might lead some of it for the public safety people. I don't expect the sheriff's office to use all of it. I mean, I'm not that greedy. I know that I've been around long enough to pick a fight now, but I'm not. And that's the purpose for the money, because technology costs. It helps, it's nice for those old people. We found out it cost awesome. And that's the purpose.
And would you have to keep upgrading to keep it current?
Yeah, it's amazing. Sometimes I think I'm outliving my usefulness here, but you do have to keep up with it. I thought the computers we had in the car, we'd keep up with it forever, and they told me the Windows 2 or 3 or 4 are already at 8.1 or something, and can't do what we need to do. Long story short, 11 computers we had in the car now have to be replaced. And of course, Jamie's told me how much money I've got in my drug account that y'all keep over here. I don't want to say it out loud because the newspaper's here. We have nothing in that account to buy new computers for all 27 vehicles. But I don't want to use drug money to do a maintenance, because you never know if you're going to get drug money and you're done. But I do know that every ticket, historical viewing tickets, and we'll continue to issue tickets, even if it's on the interstate or out of county.
A town likes flocks?
A town likes flocks. If you look at the thing, tickets are down from last year. That leads us into, to steal the technology thing. I don't want to get off what I come over and talk to you all about, but if you look at that, wire's down because of, if all y'all, you probably don't have, when I sent y'all over the 2014 stuff, I just kind of go over, just gloss it real quick, is that the services, I broke it down for y'all, A squad, B squad, C squad, D squad, and also the utility swing car. All the squads were about even until you got to the utility swing car. Incident reports wrote for 2013, the swing car was 263 for 2013. It was 42 for 2014. The number of tickets wrote for the swing car was 393 for 13. It was 30 for 2014. And you look at the number of miles put on it, number of calls, everything was just that much down. The reason being, we didn't have a swing car. Because we had deputies out, you know, one of my deputies is out for several months now with injury, not replacing. Both of them come back and say they're may not. And we had to take the swing car and put these people on the road, call wire on the road. And I mentioned, y'all, I needed those two deputies to go back on screen. We got one. I needed the deputy investigations, and I needed two in patrol. And y'all gave me one. And if you look, I put that deputy in investigation because our burglaries went up 33 percent. But our solid rate went up also because we're keeping people working on burglars. When I say 33 percent, we went from 55 burglaries to 72 burglaries per year. 72 is still a lot growing. There were one with some on the range around. 72 burglaries, which means there's a lot in Harris County. Two going out, I like. So I put another deputy in investigation to help with burglars. And you said that, still only two deputies, but I'm not asking for two deputies, but I would like to get to one in January. I'm not asking to take it out of any budgetary items, except the fact that if you look, man, Mr. Wood looked at $43,000 under budget in salaries as of November the 30th. I believe I can use that $43,000 and get a deputy. But we sit in that, simply get paid a lot less than $43,000, I believe I have to pay it from here. I'd like to go ahead with y'all's approval and fill that slot discussed. And y'all said y'all would take a relooking at it in January to see if the money was there. I think between me and Greg, I mean, and Mr. Wood, that the money is there in that salary line, without increasing my budget, but we can use the money that's been saved by virtue of deputies not being at work, some deputy being fired, and deputies being retired at a lower salary level, because they have been here long. And one deputy not being paid because he's been out for four months and his salary does not be paid out for four.
A little off the subject.
Well, it's all, it's all high technology.
We will look into that other issue, but so, you don't have anything more to say about this one?
Probably not. I'm a little off guard, but yeah, the computers, the technology and all that.
Mr. Chairman, I also talked to the clerk of court, and some people think that she does have some funds that come in for technology. However, that has to be used for records only. This would allow her to use funds for additional technology, which is not funded through that line of it.
And what we have to do, if we approve this, the resolution has to go forward from this board to the state legislature. They take that, and then it has to be introduced there and approved at that level before we can...
Yes, sir.
But that is, but what we need to do is, tonight, is to make a motion whether or not we want to approve this resolution and move off of it. I would open it to nomination at this point, Ted.
Before a motion is made, I have a question for Mr. Taylor. Juvenile court has not specifically mentioned this resolution, but it does involve the courts. I'd just like your opinion as to whether or not I would have a conflict.
No, I don't think so.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'm...
One, excuse me, one question, two things. This resolution, of course, means it's a little bit, there's no chief judge of the probate court, it's just a judge of the probate court. And two, this includes three, four entities, the magistrate court, probate court, superior court, and sheriff's office. Would that also include the board commissioners sharing in that, or would it just be divided amongst the four, those four entities?
Can the sheriff also mention that on one?
I put public safety, because I put those four who are making the decision of the win, only because I've copied other people's stuff.
Because if you're going, if the county is going to, you know, they got computers they want to update or whatever, and spend money, I think they need to probably designate it as an entity, since it's local legislation, then once it comes out of legislation, then you're... Then, once it comes out of legislation, then you're bound by what comes out of it.
And if you notice, I put "and" and not "or" in there. That way, one person couldn't decide to do something without the other ones agreeing.
Is there a chief magistrate judge?
Yes.
I don't mind putting board commissioners in there, but I think it's used really with the court system. If we decide we needed to do something that fit with that, I think it would be nice to be able to do so.
You wouldn't have to, you would not have to, and when it comes to the four of them, in this case, we decided, how you want to divide the money, you know, one may, one year have a use for all of them.
Well, that's something we're gonna have to work on too, is how we meet each year to decide who gets what. That we can do.
I'll just be devil's advocate, and throw out something that's beneficial to the sheriff's department, but it's beneficial to board commissioners, I know we got a subject for it. GIS system, that could help, the sheriff's department can help, but it's awesome, but it's a board commissioner's function, so.
I think that works, whatever, as long as we get the law.
Let's see if we can discuss this real quickly, do I, you got a question?
I was just wondering, do we need to discuss this, we're reporting legislation for it to be majority rule? Or does that need to be addressed in that legislation?
Majority rule, Mr. Wood?
No, of whatever entities are going to be making these decisions for these expenditures.
I don't think that needs to be a part of that, but I do think we need to have some discussion on that.
That's included in the simple act somewhere.
Do heavy well line up to introduce the session?
No, sir, but I think Josh will probably take the hold, or John either one of them.
Then we're gonna advertise it once, one time in the history of the general, if local legislation will be in need.
I've got to build a line next week, then I'll talk to the one of them.
Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution.
To include?
To include.
Harris County?
Yes.
Question in a second, any other discussion? All in favor, please, if I read the hand.
John Mall, local.
All right, there was stop me, thank you, Mike.
Thank you very much.
It is past time for our public hearing, so we'll skip down to that. This is a public hearing, we postponed at last meeting to let some other actions take place. What I will do is, I will call the public hearing to order, I'll read the application. Then the applicant, or his or her representative, will make their presentation. And we will hear comments from individuals in favor of the application, then followed by comments of individuals in opposition to the application. Then it'll be a summary or rebuttal, followed by comments by the petitioner, or his or her representative, and then commissioners, and we will close the public hearing and take action. Commissioners would please fill out their conflict of interest form, and we'll pass that on. And I will ask Mr. Andrew Houston, or his representative, to come forward.
Good evening.
Back to Mr. Houston.
I'm Andrew Houston, I live in Harris County, Ellisley, Georgia. Have for a long time, I've been building houses.
Mr. Houston, excuse me, I did forget to read the application.
All right.
This is the application, I'm Andrew Houston, builder incorporated, Richardson Road, Ellisley, to rezone the property owned by William Powell and Linda Wewellin on George three fifteen in Catalina. Its current zoning is A1, he's requesting to rezone it for R1. It's currently used as timber, and he wants to move it to a single-family residential, seventy point six acres. It's been recommended for approval with no conditions about the planning permission. There, Mr. Houston, I'm sorry.
All right. Like I said, I've been building houses for forty-three years. I've been developing buildings for about that long, and very proud to have, still be here and still be in business. This is a piece of property that had been on the market for several years. These heirs inherited it, and we, in Harris County lots, are getting very scared.
Yes.
And more expensive. And so it's, we're running out of places to build new homes, so it's time to start developing. And I'd like to develop this tract in the single-family house as part of the Harris County regulation to act the lines. I've spoken to four property owners surrounding the property. Three of them have had no objection. One has objected, Mr. H.D. Adahoe, due to his lake, there's a creek running through this property on the very back end of four of the lots. And my engineer says his lake is twelve hundred and some odd feet from my property. And Mr. Adahoe's client says that it's only six hundred feet, but anyway, it's a good ways downstream from the property. The state of Georgia, or either the federal, I don't know which one, makes you stay twenty-five feet off of the top of the vine. Do not disturb, twenty-five feet from the top of the vine. I met with Mr. Adahoe, yes, Monday, and then I went back and relooked and re-walked that creek. And I'm willing to put a hundred-foot do not disturb deed restriction. That means we're gonna rope it off and make those lot owners realize that they're not to cut any trees or do any disturbing within a hundred feet of the top of the vine. At seventy-five feet more than the state requires. And I think that will help in doing anything detrimental to Mr. Adahoe's lake. And, I mean, I don't have to do this, this is something I thought of out there on the property yesterday, looking at it. And it's a beautiful creek, and there's a lake up above this property. So the water flows from that lake through this property to the next lake. And hopefully, that will suffice. The next thing Mr. Adahoe was concerned about was the septic tanks. The, I guess, as y'all know, the septic tanks are controlled by the Georgia Department of Public Health. And in Georgia, anywhere you have, this is the pamphlet they give out over the health department, about septic tanks. And it states, "The department minimum lot size recommendations for a typical three, four bedroom single-family residential house is a half acre with public water." Well, as y'all know, in Harris County, we have two-acre lots. You know, that's a lot more than a half acre. The public health department makes us do a study on each individual lot, and then it recommends what system they will accept. So we're not putting in, you know, undersized or incorrect septic tanks. It's determined from the house size where the septic tank's going, how big it's gotta be, and what system you gotta have. And you don't build your house without that, the public health department.
Agreed.
So I think, I don't think that's a real worry as of right now. And even now, we have to have alternate places to put extra system. If you have a failure, I don't know whether y'all know this, if you have a failure in the septic tank nowadays, you've already got a predetermined ultimate place to put more drain fill in. So I think the septic tank issue is controlled by the health department. I think they do a good job up here, Sandy and her crew are excellent. So we don't get by with shoddy septic tanks in Harris County. So with the stream buffer being a deed restriction, no to a hundred feet instead of twenty-five, I hope I can satisfy my adjoining landlord.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
They'll come later. All right, then, open the floor and hear from any citizens who wish to speak in support of this application. Any citizens wishing to speak in support. And as you come forward, please state your name and address, and then make your comments.
I'm John Dunn, forty-five, Lake Harding five. And I'm a builder on this project. Good to see you guys. Haven't been here a long time. It's been a while since there's been a rezoning for subdivision in Harris County. And that's good news. I'll make it real short, simply, you know, in the last two or three years, I think the trend has been that the supply of houses in Harris County is going downhill. That's good news for us. And, but it also means that we need more affordable housing, and we need more houses for the metropolitan area of Columbus. Harris County has led the way, because of our good schools, quality lifestyle, it's led the way as far as home zones in the last two or three years. So, to drive around Harris County today, I was driving, just randomly, listening to people talking about this meeting tonight, but I noticed a builder who had bought an out parcel, just along the road, the county road, and he had subdivided it into three two-acre lot lots, and was building houses. I know that, I'm seeing more and more of that, where they're scrambling to buy out parcels and build houses, and that's good news. Finally, this is the southern Harris County, which is great, it's convenient, Columbus is compatible with the planning that county does, it's in Catalina, it's a really good location. And I would be great to have some more non-destruction in Catalina area. So, anyway, I just wanted to add my support to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Anyone else wish to speak in support of this application? Anyone else wishing to speak in support? All right, now I'm here from those who wish to speak in opposition.
Please, commissioner, my name is Ray Giallax, I'm an attorney from Columbus. I represent H.B. Adahoe, and wish to address the commissioner on his behalf. And while I'm showing these, if you have any problems seeing them, just let me know, I have a little portable easel I can put up. But I think I might be able to point out what we need to take a look at. Mr. Adahoe is an adjacent landowner, owning property which lies almost next to the subject tract. We're concerned about the impact that the development as proposed could have on the property which lies west of the subject property. And there are two significant concerns. The concern is the effect that this property could have on the stream. Now, Mr. Houston's property that he is proposing to rezone goes this straight up from here and comes down. My client's property is right here, and this was all family property at one time. Our most significant concern is just this lower rec panel that goes down. This is where the proposal is for four separate lots, and that's the concern that we have. We have a lake that's located here, and we're concerned about the stream. This is the wetlands or the flood zone that comes from that stream that runs through the proposed lots, these four lots. And will run over to my client's property. That's our chief concern. But we also have a concern about a shooting range that is located right here. It is a black gun shooting range that has been there for several years, and it's gonna be, you know, within a stone's throw of the property that is going to be proposed to be rezoned. Now, we're not here asking that the rezoning be denied, I mean, that's simply not what we're asking. We're just asking, quite frankly, that the decision not be made tonight so that more time can pass, and that we can determine the impact that the rezoning may have on the adjacent or nearby property. When you look at the requirements of the commission, in the pamphlet that the zoning folks give out and talks about, the commissioners are supposed to determine the positive or negative impact that the rezoning may have on adjacent or nearby property, and that's what we're asking you to do. Look at these concerns that we have, and decide what needs to be done to lessen the impact. And then let me start by going back to the shooting range. Again, we have a active shooting range that is located right here. This is where the residential houses will be. If the rezoning goes through, this is what we're gonna put on the western board. We will put that up so that anybody who buys a house there will know they're about to buy a house next to a shooting range. We also want to put, Sheriff Jolly will notice, it doesn't do any good for people to complain. There ain't house supplies to London, there's a code section that protects shooting ranges from being considered a nuisance if they've been in existence for more than a year prior to any change in the adjacent development. So if these people buy houses, and then the shooting range gets pranked up, don't call and complain about the noise. Don't say you're worried about your children wandering over there. It's protected by a Georgia statute. Harris County cannot shut it down, the sheriff cannot cite us for doing anything wrong because we're completely within the law. But this is the post, this is the board that will be posted, and I think there's similar boards already in existence in Harris County. So what do we do to address this first concern? We have this board that's running right here between adjacent property and the subject property. We would ask the commissioners to consider two conditions that might address this. Number one is, require some type of barrier, a chain-linked fence possibly, that will keep wandering children from deciding to go over here and see what the shooting is. I'm not an expert in what may work, but a six- or eight-foot chain-linked fence that runs the length of this right here might work. What I call the old wooden fence, or the privacy fence, might be a good option other than the maintenance and the upkeep on those type of fences is, quite frankly, I think rather expensive. Not to mention that they're not very attractive after a certain amount of time. Commissioners may also want to consider some type of landscape buffer to create a little separation there so that people don't have the ability to, residents don't have the ability to go out and actually take, have any activity up against this property that is next door to the shooting range. to the shooting range. That is one of our concerns. Our most significant concern though is the effect that the development could have on the stream that flows into my client's property. I think the 100-foot buffer is an excellent idea, and that's one of the things that I was going to ask for. I don't know that you have a copy of the proposed plaque, but the proposal is to put four very long skid lots that are only 115 feet wide. If there's any type of runoff coming from these lots, either through just sediment from rain, water, or from seepage from the fuel lines or septic tank, it's going to go into the stream and is gonna end up in my client's lake. Now, I met with Sandy Wilson, and I gotta be honest with you, she was very helpful and did a good job of educating me on septic tank and fill lines. But, and I have every confidence that if there is a problem, the Harris County Health Department will be right on top of it. But, that is a reactive type of action. We're trying to be proactive, and we're trying to make sure that the problem does not occur to start with. So, there's a couple of options here. One option is the 100-foot buffer that, quite frankly, I think will address a lot of the problem. Another option may be to simply limit the number of lots that can be developed just on this section coming down so that there's only two lots here, or, I'm sorry, this. So our, quite frankly, don't allow any residential lots to be developed, just on this small section. But I think if we can just require that this, again, I'm talking about the rectangle that goes down, only have two lots, which would be about four acres apiece, that will limit our, our possible problem. The state does an outstanding job in setting forth the regulations on where the septic tanks can be located, where the fill lines or the absorption fields can be located. And the, the fill lines itself, I believe, I'm not positive, have to be at least 50 feet from the stream. So if we go with the 100-foot buffer that Mr. Houston is proposing, I think that will be an excellent idea. Now, the buffer area is not something that is out of the ordinary in Harris County. In doing my research, I found that Eldersly Place has something very similar to that. In their master plaque, they have what they call, I think this is called a nature easement, but no development zones. And there cannot be any removal of any trees on this property unless they're diseased or cause a potential problem. And that's what we're asking for here, is a no development, no disturbance within 100 feet of the, and I think that's actually the southern portion of that property. That way, we don't have to worry about rainwater running off into the stream. We still have a concern about the septic tanks and the fill lines. And I think the best way to address that is simply tell Mr. Houston, let's take a step back, get the tests that you're gonna have to get for the health department, and let's take a look at it. The health department puts out a laundry list, and I may have a copy with me, a laundry list of what has to be produced in order to do subdivision development. A topo map is one of them. A level three soils report is one of the requirements. A plaque with the proposed location of the septic tanks and the absorption fields, and a, an approved stormwater pollution prevention plan. That's four of the 13 or 15 items that has to be submitted to the health department before a subdivision is developed. Mr. Houston is going to have to produce those items, so why not go ahead and produce them now before the rezoning application is approved? Let's make sure that these tests do not disclose any negative items, you know, like the land won't perk, or the, the absorption of the sewage is not going to work, and let's find out now. If those tests are produced and they come back clean, then we have no viable objection, other than still wanting the 100-foot buffer. But we're not asking Mr. Houston to do something that he's not gonna have to do anyway. He's going to have to do those no matter what. So let's just go ahead and do them up front. So, in summary, what I'm asking for is simply some type of barrier to separate the property from the land that has the active shooting range on it. The 100-foot buffer, non-disturbance area at the back of those lots, consider increasing the size of those lots that are just on that rectangle from two acres to four acres so that we don't have too much going on in that one small area. And then just require the tests that are gonna have to be done anyway to be produced prior to the decision being made. I think if we do that, then we will have done what your zoning ordinance requires, and that's to determine if the property is still to be used in a suitable manner in view of the development of adjacent and nearby property, and we will be confirming that the rezoning will not adversely affect other adjacent or nearby property. That's all we're asking the commissioner to do, is help us determine that before it's too late.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Appreciate that.
Can I clarify one thing, that, is that a high-powered shooting range?
Yes.
And they do shoot lead, right?
I'm sorry.
And they do shoot lead, right?
Yes.
Can I ask a couple of questions regarding the shooting range? Is it possible that the actual shooting area can be expanded? Or is there a restriction on its size to put it in this?
No, I don't think so. That, that, the code section is 4119, I believe. As a matter of fact, I took a look at that, and I don't think so, Mark, but I'll be having to go back and look and respond back to, to Mr. Tucker.
There's one question. Mr. Adahoe does not own the property on which the shooting range exists, is that right? And owned by a third party?
I think it's owned by its sister, but we could ask you. Yeah. Is that property owned by your sister?
Yes, and I'm the spokesperson for my sister. She and, uh, our sons could not be here tonight, and I think the commissioner said, or even spoke with him.
So, your client does not, does not own the land, or relatively owns the land on which the-
Owns the land upon which he operates the shooting range. Yes, sir.
Well, let's understand this burn on one end of the shooting range.
I'm sorry?
There's a, I understand there's a burn on one end of the shooting range. Can you show me where the burn would be?
Let me make sure that I'm doing it correctly before I show it to you. The burn is located in this end, so they're actually shooting this way with lots we have here.
Shooting away from, I guess that's Highway 315 and Holland Road.
It's Holland Road.
Okay. So the, the shooting takes place opposite of the road.
Opposite of the right, yes, sir.
My point is, black powder has got limited range on the regular.
This is the, the southern lines.
Yes.
And this is where the shooting range is. Any other questions I might be able to-
All right. Any other questions? Mr. Dunn? All right, thank you, Mr. Dunn. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition to this rezoning request? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Henry Adahoe. I represent the family of Belinski's. They have three sons there, plus my sister and her husband, who is an immigrant in Connecticut. The three, one of them wanted to be here, but he was called out at a business meeting, and then I'd make him. I also want to just thank y'all for listening and, and hear our complaints and input, and thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Adahoe. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition?
Hello. I'm Polly Layman, I'm from Birmingham, Alabama. I'm a street daughter.
Excuse me, your last name again?
Layman, L-Ayman. I just, I, I appreciate everything Randy said, and that, that is the main thing, is that we, we are concerned about the lake, and that is the main thing we really, really ask the lady to do, is just to delay this for a little while so we can be sure and we can study it a little bit more and make sure that the lake will remain safe. That lake is, um, we use it to water our gardens, it's a very important lake to us. And that's the main thing, is that we just wanna make sure that all of these issues are just thoroughly, thoroughly listed and included in this one. Those are making some.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition?
I'm Joyce Cosby, I live at 599 Holland Road. My property is on sort of the other end of this creek. But whatever happens up above us affects us, and we are concerned about the pollution that might occur and the silt that might come down the creek that might keep our children from building on our property down close to the creek, you know, where it could get polluted. And the flood zone that goes across our part of the property is wider than the flood zone across the other parts of the property. So that's our concern, is the pollution and the silt and the excess water that could come down the creek that would affect our property. And we would appreciate whatever consideration we give to these, um, things that we were asking for.
Thank you very much, Sheriff.
I'm being Adahoe, I'm actually Adahoe's son. I had a model here that I was gonna read to you. Father's attorney, pretty much, I concur with everything you said. I just wanted to make sure I did step forward and voice my concern. I live about 800 feet from the property line where this, uh, development will take place. You know, I live on that, that lake that my grandfather built back in the, I guess, the early to mid 40s. I was raised pretty much on that property, my wife, Deborah Adahoe, is here with me now. Pretty much raised two boys up there. We raised a lot of fish and farm and just the outdoors in general. And we have a great concern for that lake, and I just wanted to make sure we have some kind of protection. And if he's gonna protect this, actually, this developer's gotten his money and gone, I don't think he's gonna be able to protect this. I don't think we can count on the residents that will buy us homes to. It has to be done now, it has to be active, not a reactive situation. And that's basically, I concur with everything your attorney has said, keep my voice out there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Thank you.
I'm Bert, I represent it all. I'm Patty Green, I'm Randy's daughter. That was my big brother and my big sister. My other sister, Suzanne, who lives back there. And my husband and I, Scott, lives back there too. We built on the property, on the lake about 10 years ago, and, and we too have enjoyed everything that Ben just told you about. And, and we were just really appreciating, um, your consideration. But I, I did, I did wanna say something about what Mr. Houston said about he walked the property and he didn't, um, he didn't think that it's quite as close as Daddy had said it was in their meeting yesterday, but I would dare say you could, um, blindfold my father and my brother Ben and put them anywhere on that piece of property, that original 200 acres that my grandfather bought. And, um, they'd be able to find their home and tell you exactly where they were, north, south, east, west. So that, you know, we know the property well. And, um, we just, you know, really wanna protect our lake and, and the land that we cherish for so long. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition?
My name's Harold, tree and rezoning, 005, Little Hurry Trace, Paul, Georgia. Um, stand behind my grandfather, H.B. Adahoe, and opposing for this rezoning. And, uh, if it does pass, that they're speaking from past generations, I'm speaking from future generations, that we can have and hold that land and it be protected for anything we need. Likewise, the farm, the garden, the lake, or the shooting range. So if we just have that protection granted to us, like they would be granting that land to all of the new residents. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Anyone else? All right, uh, that will close any comments from the public. Thank you for sharing your concerns and comments with us. Uh, Mr. Houston, it's now turn, time for you to, uh, either make your, uh, final comments or rebuttal any of the statements that were made. And the commissioner will ask any questions they have.
It's, as far as the shooting range, uh, my mother lives across the street from the shooting range. Whenever they shoot, we hear it. But they don't shoot that often. And they, and this, I mean, they'll have one big shoot, say, on a Saturday, which, uh, doesn't seem to, you know, hurt anybody. I mean, we don't mind it. We don't, you know, we never complain about the shooting. We hear it just like it's right next door. I don't think, Mr. Adahoe assured me that the people shoot, uh, not at this property, but they don't shoot at this property. And they shoot kinda down the side of it, I guess you'd say. Plus, they have a burn that stops anything, if you've ever seen it, they have to have a backdrop to catch the bullets. So, I mean, it, it's, it's not like, and these aren't, uh, they can't shoot high-powered rifles out there. So these bullets don't go like, you know, as far as the high-powered rifles. So I don't think, uh, you know, anything, I mean, I, I would welcome this if they won't put it up. I, I, I told them that I, I was thinking about putting up signs myself to keep children and people from wandering in. I've seen this, uh, in Muskogee County next to a shooting range, where we built, uh, there was a subdivision built next to the shooting range, and they put these signs up all along the line so that nobody would cross the property. I, I would welcome it. I mean, that, that's, that's great. Uh, I, I just don't think, I, I know the shooting range is there, uh, I know you can't complain, you know, you can't complain about it because it's grandfathered in. Uh, we don't complain about it. We live across the street, or my mother does. The, uh, I, I would, uh, consider combining, uh, the four lots into two. That would, that would be a, a strong consideration I would make. I, I don't wanna have to pay for a fence to keep people off the shooting range. I don't want to have to pay for a fence to keep people off the shooting range. I really don't think it would be needed because of the type of shooting range it is. On the city tanks, when we take a house plan to the county health department, we have to get a level three site test done by a registered engineer. And then they take that test back to the health department and they tell us what tank, what system to put in. But we don't have to do it ahead of time. We, we can do it, all the lots in Harris County are not done level three until you go to build a house. And so, you know, I don't, this ha, this property is being bought subject to rezoning. You know, if, if y'all don't zone it, I don't buy it. If y'all zone it, I start spending money. You know, I start doing the topos Mr. Lomax talked about. I start doing the level threes. I start surveying. That's when you start spending the money after it's zoned. You're not going to spend any money ahead of time because you, then if y'all decide not to zone it, you've lost a lot of money on it. And I, you know, I mean, Harris County's growing, Plumb's growing, the overflow's coming. This pro, this property's been on the market for, I think, three or four years. It's that lake. They could have bought it. Anybody could have bought it. What are you going to do with it? I mean, it's, it's, it's ready for development. I mean, Harris County needs, people want to live in Harris County. They, the two-acre lots, the minimum two-acre lots attracts them. They want nice houses. These houses, you know, be two fifty, three hundred, three fifty. I mean, it'll be a lot of, you know, be thirty nice new homes up here. The tax, you know. I mean, I don't know what, if y'all know what we build? We build in Ellis Leaf, we build on Lake Skillet. We build, you know, all around these nice-looking, what I call medium-priced homes. And this is a spot that's been sitting there and I think it's, you know, ready to develop. I mean, what if the people that own the shooting range decide tomorrow that they don't want to come back or live here and they want to subdivide theirs? I mean, would Dad hold, tell them no? They're kin folks? You can't, you can't subdivide the shooting range to the subdivision? I doubt it. You know. I don't, I don't know what, what y'all think's going to happen, but, you know, we got to have lots to build them. And Harris County's got to grow.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Adalho. The commissioner's any questions? Any other questions? Mr. Houston, I'm sorry.
I have, I have three matters I'm concerned about. I am sympathetic to the concerns of the Adalho family and the water, but we're not approving the plat yet. So the testing would come in time. So that's, it's not a done deal that the proposed plat is how the lots are going to go in there. So there's a lot of safety and protection left to come and we will definitely keep in mind your comments and appreciate them. The red on that one air balloon photo Mr. Lomax presented showed the flood zone and yet I'm not seeing it located on the plats that we were getting. And what's shown on the plats we were getting are not shown on that, if I'm reading you right.
I don't know who put this red on it that might not be correct.
I think actually that came from the tax assessor's office. That's, that's where we're at.
I'd be glad to show you the copy of the plat. We've got, I guess it was called the rezoning.
And I think that was part of our concern.
Wait, wait, we're fixing to get beyond the scope of, of the period here.
He's had his comments. And I'll take your questions.
My apologies. I'm concerned about there not being a second exit with this, potentially with this many lots. And the other issue I have would be to identify that the Muskogee Long Rifles or Shooting Range on the plat itself, so that there will be public notice that it is on the joint property. Just some way for the public to know in case they don't ride down the home road.
Mr. Houston, you said that you would put a deed restriction from the crest of the hill at the bank of the creek, one hundred feet, undisturbed, right?
Yes.
I do, I, I, I do know that tests will have to be run to determine whether the land perks. We might even say you couldn't build all that you're intending to build. That, that we don't know, but that's why we have those things done. I do, I've been told that, because I too was a little concerned, wanted to clarify the seepage in the ground from septic systems. And I was told by the health department that as far as their requirements are concerned, you only have to keep a seventy-five-foot setback from a well that's used for drinking water. So certainly the hundred-foot buffer is more than that requirement. And this creek is not used for drinking water. I do, I think the signs would certainly be very, very helpful if the zoning is to be approved. And with the, I do know that with the two-acre lots, you do have to have the second site identified in the event of a drainage field failure. And both of those would have to meet any kind of setback restrictions. I, I don't have any other questions. Any other questions?
Mr. Houston, would you be willing to have on your plat to identify the property, the joint property as being owned of, as a shooting range or identifying the Muskogee Long Rifles?
Yeah.
Excuse me, I may, don't want to get out of turn, but I think a resolution can be achieved here.
Yes, we're not resolved, we're ahead of it.
Thank you, sir.
We have, you know, if y'all zone it, you know, then I have to draw up the plat. And we have to go back before planning to get plat approved. But the, so that, you know, just because you zone it, it's not found plat. This is, this is the first step.
Okay, thank you, sir. Are there any other questions? Can you have plans there?
Could you be sure that we have the, where the accurate flood line is? Would you go ahead and ask you to go back and look at it?
Where the, where the flood plain actually is.
They'll make sure it's on the plat. I think that's required on the primary and final plats. Is that right?
Nancy, I called to the engineer and told him to go back and look at the flood plain maps. He sent me a corrected concept plan. I got it this morning and it does show the flood plain on those back four. So he just, over the concept plan, he had not done the engineer drawings. That is required on the primary plats. But I do have a copy if y'all would like to see it.
Uh, yeah, if you would, please. Can you say it's, so it's toward the end of that arm that juts down? Toward the far end away from it, which would be the end closest to Holland Road?
This actually shows that don't through the, you can get on the plot map, but I can't.
Is this the edge I'm actually going to go that way?
Yeah, this should be like the middle.
Oh, that's the middle of it. Okay. So it goes through the bottom of those four lots.
And that's where you're talking about, the hundred-foot.
The hundred-foot buffer, so it'd be off of that line, off of the creek bank.
Creek finance, yeah, okay.
Yeah. Brandon, do you want to see it?
Yeah.
May things work at the public hearing. So, I mean, the public hearing's closed except for the questions.
Except for your questions.
To the zoning administrator. All right.
This is, this right there. There's two of them. Okay, that's the one that, did not get on this one.
All right, any other questions, Mr. Houston? Close the public hearing. And we'll entertain a motion. It is in my district. I appreciate Mr. Houston and Mr. Adalho and other parties meeting to discuss issues, trying to reach a level of comfort. I certainly can understand the concerns of the Adalhos. However, I am going to make the motion that we approve this zoning request with the following conditions. Number one, that there be a one-hundred-foot deep restriction of an undisturbed buffer from the top of the bank of the creek. Number two, that, a, on the plat for the sales materials for this development, that the black powder gun range be shown with a little bit of detail, showing the direction of the fire and the type of firing. I am sensitive to the request, wanting to know more going in, but we do have our health department for a reason. We do have the D regulations that are mandated for a reason. And I don't think it's appropriate to go for, Mr. Houston, to go through the expense of that prior to the rezoning. But certainly those are things that you will have to do after the rezoning. And I will not make it a condition, but you said you would strongly consider, Mr. Houston, reducing those four lots to two. It may well be that with the, with one hundred feet from, from that creek, and then it is close to a flood zone, so you may have some trouble with it perky now. I would strongly urge you to consider doing that, but I am not going to make that a condition. Those are my conditions in my motion to, in my motion. And second, those are all the conditions that anyone wants to put on.
I would, Mr. Chair, I've communicated you would not like to make that a condition to change the four lots to two. I prefer changing that to two lots rather than four. All that, and make that a condition.
Okay, I would accept that. Do you accept that? So that it would be a third condition and instead of the four, there'd be two lots.
And I would also suggest that we put the signs along the edge. So the sign is good.
And I believe the way that was presented was it would be the Adalhos and those people that erect those signs. Mr. Houston said you would not object to that.
If they're willing, yes, I agree.
All right. Okay, any other conditions? There's three conditions. All right, all in favor of the application with those three conditions? Please say if I raise your hand. Most curious now, Mr. Houston, and to affect all of y'all again. So I'd like to look at, and how the forces, this is a good development. And I'm looking forward to it. Thank you. Okay, now we go back to tab five. All right. All right, the next item on the agenda is an appointment for the board of tax assessors. Rick Norris, who was recently appointed, has had to change the park and decided that he no longer wishes to serve on that board at this time, although he leaves it open for sometime in the future. The board of assessors had recommended that Adam Smith, mortgage banker with Heritage Bank in a resident of Harris County, be to complete the term of Mr. Norris. Do I have any, a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve. And a second, any discussion?
I think that's a great name for someone I've known before. Famous name.
Famous name. All right, that's true. Congratulations. All right. Any other comments, all in favor? Please say with our right hand. Motion carries. And next is a financial statement for November two thousand and fourteen. Any opinion, motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. And a second. A second, discussion. I would like to say the footnotes are helpful. And we seem to be tracking along in a financially sound direction. Any discussion? Any questions?
Mr. Chair, I think we have some questions, but nothing that I need to, I need to say.
All right. All in favor, please say with our right hand. Motion carries. Next is a request for tax refund from Danny Gatlin, Gatlin Pest Control. Question refunding the amount of fifty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents. Seems this was double paid. The tax commissioner agrees and the board of tax assessors agree. You have attached the documents that show the buildings.
Chair, I move to approve the refund. I second.
Motion to approve. And a second, any discussion? Motion to approve and a second, any discussion?
I have a question, and I'm sure it's in here somewhere and I didn't see it. Fifty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents, why is that different? When they paid the tax due, it was sixty-nine, twenty-one, and Mount Bay was sixty-nine, twenty-one. And I couldn't find fifty-three, twenty-nine anywhere. I'm sure it's in here somewhere, but.
Good question. No, it's not in there anywhere. I just.
So I just wondered why the difference, what the difference is.
That's what he requested, so I guess he's just being jealous.
Maybe.
Leaving six dollars on the bill.
It could possibly be that there's some different matters included that this is not disclosed. The bill that went to Mr. Gatlin does include some other equipment that's not forced into the first bill.
I'd like to ask, I'd like to know what the difference is.
All right, we'll table the next gentleman. Did you have to ask? All right. Okay, next move to county manager's portion. Can I, can I ask that you go ahead and take the county attorney? And I just got a phone message from the emergency management. Sure, Craig, right, you guys just step out and take that. All right, very good. Taylor, you have two items, one that you just added.
Yes, yes, sir. The first is the GED testing agreement with Columbus Tech. I think Alex Hayden is here, can speak to these, but evidently Columbus Tech has come and made a proposal to conduct on-site GED testing of the inmate's house at Harris County Prison. And the cost, of course, is twenty dollars an hour, funded by inmate commissary commissions that, things are sold, and the commissary will be paid from that. There is a contract which is attached, and of course, we'll need to modify slightly because the Harris County Prison is not a separate entity by being the name of the board of Harris County, acting by through the board of commissioners for the Harris County Prison. I brought you the agreement, and the way I understand it is that the only thing Harris County will have to do is provide a testing environment, then they'll come up.